Okay, hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall and I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager. And in typical fashion, I will give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. So this evening, the Board has a number of action items to address, those including action to approve a conditional use for the Take Five Auto Services Station at 4013 Victoria Avenue, following which, under old business, the Board will take action on two agenda items related to solid waste and recycling collection contracts. After this, under subdivision and land development actions, the Board will take action to approve a preliminary and final land development plan for Carden Enterprises. And then also that they will take action on the improvement guarantees as they typically do from meeting to meeting, following which they will take action to pay the township and authority bills, hear any final announcements, and then finally make a motion to adjourn the meeting. With all that said, members of the Board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gottschall. Call this meeting the Lower Paxton Board of Supervisors to order. We'd like to ask everyone to please stand and Supervisor Lindsey will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. It is time now for approval of minutes of the February 21st, 2023 Business Meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session prior to this public meeting and will do so following. Now is the time for public comment. Public comment is a time set aside if you wish to address the Board on an item not on the agenda. If you wish to address the Board on an item that is on the agenda, you will have an opportunity to do that at that time. So would anybody like to address the Board on an item not on the agenda? Please come to the podium in the center and give us your name and address. And these would be for items not on the agenda tonight.
Charles Hope, 6131 Bluestone Avenue. I would like to speak on the use of the automatic collection.
That, sir, that is going to be discussed later, not now.
Okay.
You'll have an opportunity to, you'll have an opportunity to speak to that when we get to that item on the agenda. Now is the time for items that are not on the agenda tonight, and the solid waste contract is on the agenda. So if you have questions or comments about the solid waste contract, that will be an agended item. Tim?
Good evening. My name is Tim Murphy, 1524 Pine Hollow Road. I'd like to thank the supervisors and the staff for supporting the recent acquisition of the Spangler tract up on top of Blue Mountain. It's going to connect Hope Park with the Boyd Big Tree Preserve. Boyd Big Tree in itself is a wonderful hiking area, but if you start at the bottom and try to get to the top, it's a real challenge. So if you go across the top from Hocker Park, it'll be a whole lot easier. So I'm really happy to see that that land is going to be preserved now and keep that trail open. Hopefully, the next step on the township's part will be to improve the parking facilities there at Hocker Park and overall improve the appearance because it gets a lot of misuse in terms of trash dumping and things like that. So hopefully, that'll improve in the future. One other comment?
Tim, I'm hoping, you said about the parking. I'm hoping that maybe we can collaborate with Middle Paxton because they do butt up against us and see if we can't do something with the parking with them and enlarge it.
That would be great. Thanks. One other comment I'll make. A few of us in the audience, myself included, are a little bit challenged by the font size on your agenda tonight.
By the what?
The font size.
Me too, Tim.
You know, I was looking at that also.
Yeah.
I brought the wrong glasses.
I'm all in favor of conserving paper, but maybe we could use the backside to print it a little bit larger font next time.
Yeah, Brad, can we go to 16-point font instead of 12-point font? It would be a lot easier.
This looks like about eight.
Yes, you, yeah, you're right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Yes, sir, please give us your name and address.
Yes, Michael Daly, 5893 Shook Place. I was basically just looking for a general update on some of the water and sewer projects, namely the Fairmont and Devonshire Heights. That one, I had a little bit of concern. There was the detour, but then the detour is now closed. So just trying to find the, what's the official detour for that, as well as any updates you may have. Also with Locust Lane, just same thing, an update. Are they at the final phase of getting ready to repave the road and they're just doing the preps work for that? Or is there still utility work going on? And then same thing with Shoops Garden and Wood Lawn. Are they just getting ready to repave those? And then lastly, the old Locust Lane Bridge, was it rust, damage, corrosion, or did they possibly heavy equipment using the bridge that made, should not have been? That's all I have at this end. You could, anybody that knows anything can feel free to answer. Thank you.
Mr. Gottschall?
I have to say, members of the Board, that for each of these projects, I don't have a definitive update at this point. I mean, from day to day, these things change with regard to weather or, you know, supplies of materials and things like that. As it relates to the Fairmont project, the latest update is that the detour is suspected to lift sometime during the first week of May. That's their timeline at this point. As it relates to Locust Lane, as we know, that is not a township project and we are nowhere near that project. So that, we are at the will of the various contractors, of which there are many on that project. As far as the Locust Lane, the old Locust Bridge, that, that bridge is one that is not on the typical township or county maintenance program due to the length of it. The county has a very, very aggressive and very proactive maintenance program. And that one, like I said, just due to the length of it, it's not on their program. So at this point, we have the, the bridge closed. It has been inspected by township engineers and we are working with our Public Works Department to determine a replacement schedule for that. So that should be forthcoming, but...
Did they give a reason why they think, or just age and...
Just age.
Okay.
Just age.
Old.
Yeah.
You said about Fairmont. Does that, the beginning of May, is that going to mean that the culvert is totally finished and Fairmont will open the whole way to Locust Lane?
Correct. That is correct.
Good. Okay, great.
Yeah, I understand the problem now is there are detours to the detours in some of these projects. My commute to work is about 10 minutes longer just trying to get out of the development. But the goal, I think, with all these projects would be to have them wrapped up this construction season and repaved. That's generally been the process going forward. But it's going to be a number of weeks yet on each of these.
And Mr. Daly, the one on Etzel Street, that was not planned. There was a sewer break and after they got in there, they found that there's three more sewer breaks. So that's going to be about two weeks.
When is the next meeting of the Sewer Authority?
May.
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 End of May.
The last, last Tuesday of May would be the next Sewer Authority meeting and you could get additional information, you know, at that meeting on sewer projects. Anybody else like to address the Board on an item not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move to Chairman and Board Member comments. Board Members, do you have any comments?
We've been busy since last Tuesday. I just want to, what Mr. Murphy had said on Friday with the dedication, they can, Central Pennsylvania Conservatory, they got a grant from DCNR to help with the connection of that. And also there was from the, oh, the Nature Conservatory, there was money there. And they were able to acquire the land through Tim and Jim Spangler, who gave them, you know, in purchasing the land. So it's about four, I'm not a hiker, but they told us it's about four and a half miles from Hocker Park down to Fish and Creek Valley. Yeah, is what they said. So that was Friday. Saturday night, our fire companies came together and had an all-fire-company celebration. The Board attended that and thank you for the volunteers for all you do for Lower Paxton Township. After that, the Board was invited to the Pan Ram Foundation Excellent Celebration and that was honoring volunteers through the NutrPAC program, alumni of the school district, and students that did acquire scholarships. So that was on Saturday. Last night, Mr. Zumas and myself, we represent the township at the Council of Governments. So we were there at that meeting. And that's Cumberland County, York County, Lebanon County, and Dolphin County that we meet. The township has two events coming up on April the 26th. It will be at Hero's Grove at 1:30. Am I right, Nick? 1:30 in the afternoon for our Arbor Day Celebration and our Shade Tree Commission will also be there. So please, if you're not doing anything, please come out and join us. On April the 30th, Sunday, from 12 to 2 at Lingle Park, Lower Paxton Township will have their kite festival. There will be food trucks there. Bring your kite. If you don't want to eat on the food trucks, you can bring a lunch and hang out there and there will be all kinds of competitions with the kites. So last year, there was probably about three, 350 people there. So it's to be a fun day and hopefully, the weather will be nice. So I think we're good.
Well, if it's a day like today, the kites will do well.
Yeah, they will.
Any other Board Members have comments? Okay, seeing none, the Managers report?
I have no report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Excellent report. And now we need to move to take action to approve a conditional use for Take Five Auto Service Station at 4013 Victoria Avenue. And I do not see Mrs. Zerby, so Mr....
Mr. Garrett.
Oh, Nick is here, okay. Hi, Nick.
The township has received a conditional use permit application that would allow for an auto service station with three bays to be constructed at 4013 Victoria Way, which is adjacent to the Lowe's Home Improvement Store along Union Deposit Road. Take Five is a drive-through oil change service that does not perform automotive repairs except work that may be conducted that is closely similar in character to the following: sale and installation of oil, lubricants, batteries and belts, and similar accessories. All work is conducted inside the building while the customer remains in the car and there are no gasoline pumps or other outdoor business activity on site. The property is owned CG Commercial General, which allows for an auto service station as a conditional use. Section 117(c) of conditional use consideration states that the same standards shall apply to a conditional use that are listed in Section 116(c) for a special exception use. These are the following standards: compliance with the ordinance, compliance with other laws, traffic, site planning, neighborhood, make sure the use is consistent with neighboring properties, and the natural features present on the lot. Conditional use 2301 was recommended for approval at the April 5th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting and the public notice was posted in the Legal Act column of The Sun on Thursday, March 30th, 2023, and Thursday, April 6th, 2023. And with that, if any Board Members have questions for myself, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Nick, I just have a question. Will they be coming in, pulling in from Union Deposit Road? Or will they be coming in from Victoria Way, coming in that way and then going out onto Union Deposit?
The land development plan proposes a driveway that would be accessing Briarsdale Road and would line up with the intersection of Hassler Road.
Okay.
This is a new business or a reauthorization of an existing?
This is a new business that would be infill development at a site that housed a vacant, single-family home.
Ah, okay. I know what you mean.
Okay.
Board Members, any other question?
I think staff has reviewed it and approved it, correct?
The applicant has the ability to submit a conditional use and in conjunction, a land development plan. The land development plan and conditional use both went before the Planning Commission. Both were recommended for approval. It's just that the land development plan has some more work before it can come before the Board.
Is there anybody, I was going to say, is there anybody here representing them? Do they have any questions for us?
If you would like to come to the podium, please, and give us your...
I didn't know if there was anybody here.
Boys right here. Name and address. And if you'd like to add anything to that...
My name is Alex Tweedy. I'm the civil engineer for the project with Land Corps Engineering Consultants. I believe the summary of the use was consistent with our plans and the discussions at the Planning Commission. We're here to answer any operational questions you have, but otherwise, I think the presentation was, was complete.
So Mr. Garrett said you stay in your car. Why this?
Yeah, the typical operation is it's a three-bay facility. They have typically four employees, one tech for each bay, and then a fourth person that's outside the building in the parking lot. You basically pull in, they assign you a lane, you know, tell you to go to Bay 1, Bay 2, Bay 3. There's the service bay itself and then parking stalls behind that bay for anybody that's waiting. You would stay in your car. It's a five to 10-minute typical operation in the facility. You pull into the property, you get assigned to bay, you pull through, you get your oil changed, five, 10 minutes, and you're back out on your way. So it's a very streamlined operation. They don't really, even though it's a three-bay building, even at the peak, they usually only have maybe four cars dealt within an hour. So there's typically no wait, but there is parking spaces behind each bay, you know, for busy times. But operationally, they have hundreds across the nation. I think they're mostly down south. They're, they're new to the northeast market. But they have, I believe it's 700 facilities nationwide. So they're well-versed in the operation of the facility. They, they've owned and operated many of these facilities and...
So this is first kind of in the east or the west shore area?
Yeah, I mean, it's similar to like a Jiffy Lube that we have up here. It's just a new, a new provider.
That's what I meant, it's new, okay.
Yeah, they're coming up. I think most of their facilities are down south currently and they're new to the northeast market.
So I assume they drive over a pit?
Correct. Inside the building, there's, you know, the building is very simple. It's three bays. One side is the oil tank. The other side is the oil reservoir and there's a pit, three pits in between. Basically, drive over the pit, get your oil changed, and move along.
Any member, do you have a question? Any Members of the public have a question or comment on this? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion on the action to approve?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve action on the conditional use for Take Five Auto Service Station at 4013 Victoria Avenue.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that is approved. There you go. Thank you.
I'm so sorry. Who seconded?
I did. Mr. Judd did, yes. All right, now we're going to proceed to a couple of items of old business here. Tonight, the Board needs to take action toward a contract for solid waste collection and disposal services to Penn Waste Incorporated. And before we proceed, Mr. Stein, if you would once again review the legalities surrounding this and the parameters under which the Board can operate.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, in this type of a contract, which exceeds a dollar threshold of $22,000, that means you can only purchase above that with a competitive sealed bid. And, and that's required by the Second Class Township Code. Once the bids are submitted, they're opened by the township and then they, the staff typically would go about the assessment of the bids by reading through them and in order to determine which is the lowest, which has the lowest responsible bid. Negotiation with regard to a competitive sealed bid is not permitted. Once, once the bids are open and then, and all the numbers are available to be viewed, at that point in time, those numbers are the numbers. They can't be negotiated. They can't be changed. In addition, the contract must be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, which means two things. Number one, the contractor has to have the lowest bid. Number two, he has to be a responsible bidder. And that is that it's proved that, or the bidder shows that he has the capability to do all the work that's set forth in the bidding document that needs to be done.
And, and in this case, Penn Waste was the lowest bid and is a responsible bidder.
That's correct.
And all those numbers of, all the companies that bid, of which there were three, are available on our website if anybody would like to view them. There's a very extensive PowerPoint that Mr. Gottschall put together and all that information is publicly available on the website. Board Members, do we have any questions or comments relative to this?
I have some for Joel. Would you be able to come up to the mic? Okay, I had a couple of calls from some residents this week. So the number one was...
Remind folks who you are, Joel.
Yes.
Oh.
Sorry about that. My name is Joel Waschak. I am the Market Development Representative for Penn Waste.
Okay. My first call that I had this week is, we sell the tags for the bags. And of course, no one is going to be, no one bid to have the tag bags. So my question is, we need to reimburse them? At least this is what I'm thinking. We need to reimburse the people that purchase the tags. How do we go about that?
Yes, Mrs. Lindsey, the, so the Waste Management has already kind of given the township some assurance that they will reimburse the township for any purchased but unused bag tags. So for the purposes of actually the township itself, all tags that we have on either in township offices or out on the street are purchased by the township. We purchased them from Waste Management. So for the purposes of residents' concern, you know, they can, you know, at some point, come to the township and give those back and we will reimburse them. And then the Waste Management will reimburse the township. So, but we, we have to really kind of work out all those details internally and then make sure that we communicate that to residents. But we're just not sure, you know, by which date people should bring them back or what the process will look like there. But, but yes, they will be reimbursed.
Okay. And then Joel, I had a question. Last week, we weren't real clear on the yard waste. So you can use the brown bags.
Correct.
You can bundle them up. And then the question is, can residents use their own trash cans, sit them alongside the other yard waste and put sticks and all kinds of stuff in them? I think that was something we didn't, we didn't clarify.
Yes, they may, as long as it is, there's no lid on the containers that we can see that it is yard waste material.
Okay, so they can use their own, their own containers?
Yes.
Okay. And then another call that I had too was, you have like Wenrick Street, you have Blue Ridge, where they don't have curbs, they don't have sidewalks. And a lot of them, from what I was told, are sitting their cans at the ends of the driveway. And like the one gentleman that called on Wenrick, he has a tree on one end and he has a mailbox that's all bricked up on the other. He sits them in the driveway. He's concerned because now they're going to have to go alongside the street and they're going to get hit. So his question to me was, and I don't know, if those cans get hit, they get demolished. Are we responsible to pay for those or do, who is responsible to pay for them?
So as part of the contract, we are to provide the mobile carts. We understand that wear and tear will happen or accidents may happen over time. We will simply replace that mobile cart for the resident at no cost.
Okay, so his question is, the truck will not be able to pull between the tree and the mailbox? So he just, everybody must sit them on the street, not in the driveway?
I would need to actually look at that property myself. I cannot...
Okay, well, we have a lot of streets. We have Devonshire Heights. We have Devonshire Road. We have Blue Ridge. We have Wenrick. We have a lot of streets where they're going to sit them on, you know, on the street and the streets aren't real wide and then you risk the chance of the cans getting hit and, you know, stuff coming out. So is there any way with some of those that the driver would get out of the truck and do that, you know, put them in? Or no, they're all going to be done with a arm?
Yes, they will be done with the arm. We've, there are going to be some, not problem, but challenging areas that we need to review and we will then communicate with the residents on those, those streets, how to properly place their material for collection.
Yeah, because he was also concerned in the wintertime when it's snowing, the snowplow comes along, pushes the snow, and now they're stuck in the snow and then the truck, you know, alongside the road can't get them. So, you know, I'm just asking you because he asked me and I did not know the answer.
What was his address so I can...
910 Wenrick.
Thank you.
I mean, I have, I have a relative that, that, you know, has been doing this for years and they have a driveway. They're in another state, but they have a driveway and they're told, put it in this, one on this side of the driveway and one on that side of the driveway. They're not even in the street. So it's not like you can't pick them up in the driveway, right? I mean, as long as they're up...
Correct, yeah, as long as they're close.
As long as they're close enough to the street.
The automated arms can reach out to about six feet.
Yeah, so it's not that they have to be, okay.
But like with this one, there's a tree at one end of the driveway and, you know, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
But there may be a way.
Yeah, well, he's, when he called, he just said everybody along Wenrick. Now sticks them inside, you know, puts them inside the driveway because, you know, it's not a very wide road and the, the cars are up and down and the trucks and stuff, so... Okay, that was the only questions I think that I had. Oh, I had the one that I asked you last week. So if there's a problem, the trash didn't get picked up, the recycle didn't pick up, are the residents calling you or are they calling the township? Then the township is calling you.
I believe that's something that we need to discuss with the, with township staff.
Okay, because that's what you told me last week. Okay.
We haven't had that meeting yet.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'm done.
Any other Board Members have questions, comments? Okay, then we'll move to public comment. We do ask you to please limit your comments to no more than five minutes because we probably have a number of people who would like to comment. So please start by giving us your name and address, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan Crum, Fire Chief Plenary Sound, 6151 Blue Ridge Avenue. And just echo Supervisors Lindsey's comments and concerns about streets. If you just want to throw my address, 6151 Blue Ridge Avenue down, has another system to check there, Lake Wenrick Street. I only have about two feet from the white line to my grass and a driveway that sits along Blue Ridge. So I echo her concerns about the snowplow issue and stuff like that. However, probably could safely manage it along the edge of my driveway. But again, something to check and report back to us on.
Sure.
You know, I mean, it feels like we're going to have this problem coming up. I mean, it would be something that they would take up with their driver too, right? I would assume, you know, if you put it out there.
Well, but if they're, you know, you put your stuff out the night before, you go to work the next day, you never, sometimes you don't even know he was picking up your garbage, or trash, excuse me, you know, or the recyclables.
I guess then you'll just get a lot of phone calls. Hey, sir.
Sir, go ahead. Name and address, please.
Charles Hope, 6131 Bluestone Avenue. And I apologize, but it's late in the day and I'm not sure if my hearing aids are working quite well. I understood what you said about Waste Management and our pay-by-bag tags. What I didn't understand, are we going to have a pay-by-bag service?
No.
No.
Then can I interject my comments then on that situation or am I just...
You may. You, you, you're free to comment however you like. I will only, I would only say that nobody bid on that. So nobody would do it.
Well, I understand... Well, I understand, but I can't believe that there's not enough people in this township that pay by bag. In my case, it's, if I do it every month, right now, that's seventy-two dollars a year. And you want to charge four-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars for that service, so that I can put out one thirty-gallon bag every month? That-
Mr. Hope, um, Mr. Gottschall just told me that there were, there are six-hundred-and-sixty-six residents that purchased tags out of fifteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-five.
Yeah, the, the, the problem is, um, you know, it, as Solicitor Stein indicated, it is a, it is, it's a bid process. And Mr. Gottschall actually solicited, what, thirty-some different companies? Of which only three, uh, submitted bids. And there were municipalities, by the way, in our area, uh, in recent months, uh, years, that have received one or no bids on their contracts. So we had three companies bid, and due to a combination of factors, uh, being cost of, uh, well, everything, gas, trucks, labor, uh, difficulty in getting labor, uh, like every other business, trying to find people to work is a challenge. Uh, none of the three companies that bid provided a per-bag option. Which, we're not too happy about.
Yes, sir. I heard that last week, and I heard half a dozen people or so indicate that they don't put out enough trash. But in my case, like I said, if I accumulate a lot, I do one bag a month. The truck pulls up. Okay, I wanted to make sure I'm reading the right stuff. Truck for the trash pulls up, the guy on the back gets off, grabs a bag, out of my can, throws it on the back of the truck, and gets back on the truck, ten seconds. He doesn't have to walk just to the back of the truck. Ten seconds. To, for the recycle, driver pulls up, gets out of the door, takes the lid off my truck, thirty seconds. Now, you want to do this automated, automated collection. You know, I picture this taking two minutes for that arm to come down, pick up that, and dump it. That's two minutes each can at my house, which is now four minutes rather than forty seconds. And you're saying, this is going to save you manpower and gas. You're now four minutes, over three minutes longer idling there, and you've only eliminated one person, and you had to purchase two trucks to do this, and all these containers. Well, maybe twenty years in the future, that's going to pay off, but that doesn't make sense right now to eliminate one person.
Automated collection actually takes about, I would say, anywhere between fifteen and thirty seconds per stop to, to fully lift the container up, dump it.
For that arm to come down and go back up.
Yes.
Okay, well, you all saved ten seconds on that then. But I still can't believe there's not enough purchased by bags.
Well, again, the, again, the bottom, the bottom line is, nobody will do it.
Well.
So, well, you know, I can put one bag a month out in their big container and put it out by the curb. I can't get four more bags per week. I can't get four more bags per month, and you're charging me four-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. He's not paying attention.
Oh, yes, he is. Me? Okay. You, Paul?
Yeah, I'm trying to give you a solution. So, yeah, I mean, it is a real problem. Uh, I come from the medical field, uh, did a, had a family practice, or worked at a family practice here locally. And we have people, I don't know if you're familiar, but with the donut hole, but, you know, there is, we call it the donut hole in medicine, where there's a point in time where somebody retired, no longer had, can afford their insur- they don't get the insurance for a period of time. So, you know, I do understand from that standpoint, there are a lot of people, you know, around here that can't afford to pay for their medications, um, and that's throughout the United States, unfortunately. So, at a, for a period of time in the year. So it is a hardship to ask them to, to pay that amount of money for, you know, for, for garbage. So, trying to think of a solution. I mean, you guys do larger can, the, the six-hundred-and-sixty-seven or so, I'm gonna say so. Were they included in that fifteen thousand? Or did you not include them in the fifteen thousand? They were included in the fifteen thousand? You know, so they were included in your price, I guess. I, I, I'm trying to think of a, would it be possible for us to continue with some kind of a tag system, but get a bin, you know, where Penn Waste comes and picks up, you know, at the municipal building or something? I mean, or is that a violation of the, of the, uh, contract? I, I'm just trying to think of a solution for, for, for some of these people that can't afford, you know, that, that are absolutely not going to be able to afford to do that, you know, to be able to pay for that.
Well, we'll have to have discussions about the legality of these things.
I was gonna say, any, anything we do kind of above and beyond what's spelled out in the contract and now, or the bid, and now the contract, would require some sort of external agreement between the township and the hauler. Um, and it would cost the township even more money, because we're, we're, you know, per the action, uh, by the board tonight, we will be locked in to paying Penn Waste a hundred-three dollars per customer per quarter, um, because that's what-
I mean, I understand that, yes.
Required. So, um, again, if we were to go out and now, um, if the board wanted to provide, um, you know, some sort of bin to kind of low, uh, volume customers, that would actually be even costlier.
Sure.
Because that would, again, be an arrangement we'd have to make with Penn Waste, kind of outside the agreement. Um, because that's not something that the other bidders were privy to.
Sure.
Um, so.
I mean, I, yeah, again, it was just a question, it's just a thought. I mean, you know, that if there's a way to do something, you know, because we're gonna have those people that, and I'd rather people get medication than, you know, pay for their, for their trash. So we're, we'll have to look at that, okay?
Yeah, I do want to say that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna move on to the next.
Okay, just wait. I do want to say that the township did try to keep the bag tags, but none of the bidders bid on it. So we did try, uh, Mr. Hope, to keep the program, but unfortunately, none of the bidders, um, bid on it, so.
Okay. Would anybody else like to address the board? Uh, your name and address, sir?
Albert Banks, sixty-five fifty-one Lighters Lane. I just had a question or two. Um, does the township know how many elderly people over sixty are in the township?
Wait, wait a minute. Elderly over sixty? Uh, wait a minute here.
Trying to-
I'm getting a little worried about that.
Trying to qualify a question.
I understand where you're going, sir, but-
I'm trying to qualify a question in reference to individuals that may be indigent, uh, people that are shut in, people that have, uh, uh, other kinds of concerns, and they don't have the ability to travel to the township building to dump trash as that recommendation was made. But I was just wondering, how many elderly, however you might want to classify them, or in the township, uh, as head of households, et cetera, and, uh, and balance to the rest of the population in the township? And I, and if that's a large number, um, has the township, uh, to your legal staff, the option to decide not to accept the bids because they don't meet the needs of the township? If the needs of the township are to serve the residents, in this case, for trash pickup, et cetera, um, but none of the bidders are offering that provision in their service plan, then why does the township have to accept it and force people to pay it absorptive rates for a service that they don't need?
Well, let me, I'll just question back to you, sir. Then what do we do in July when we no longer have a contract?
Well, that would be a question for legal staff. Do you have provisions in your current contract with Waste Management to extend that contract until such a bid was completed?
Well, we, we, we did have, we did ask Waste Management to extend the contract, and they declined. So they refused to extend the contract past June thirtieth, which is what triggered us going out for bid. And if we were, we, we do have the option of rejecting all the bids, uh, however, uh, that would put us in a situation where July first, we wouldn't be ready with somebody else to collect trash, which would be a problem. And number two, if we rejected all the bids and rebid it, we might get even higher bids than we get now. So there would be a danger to that. Uh, and again, we, we did go to thirty different companies, only three companies bid, and out of thirty companies, nobody would do it differently.
I mean, this is, this is a problem that, that, it's not just us, it's every, all the surrounding municipalities are running into. But that is the question, you know, and my understanding is that even at this rate, to get everything by July is going to be tight. So.
Yeah.
You know, the only other option is that the township do it, and we're absolutely not prepared to do that. And I don't think that you'd like the answer on, on the taxes for how much that would cost if we, if we had to do it ourselves, uh, or allow everybody to pick their own, you know, vendor, which then you're gonna have trash out every day of the week, and you're gonna have garbage trucks driving around everywhere, you know, and causing traffic issues and, and more. So, you know, and looking at the scope of the entire thing, it's, it's like, we're not, we're, we're, we've got to pick the, and, you know, no offense, but, you know, the lesser of, of the evils, and, and it's like, we have to do some, there's gonna be a change. Everybody wants to move to these cans and to the automation. And that's, as a businessperson, I can understand, you know, why they want to do that. Um, but this is kind of, this is what we've been given, and it doesn't seem like we have much of an option at all. So it's unfortunate, but this is where we're, where we're at.
And, and regrettably, you know, we have been for many months, uh, watching this occur in other municipalities around the mid-state, and, uh, this has been a concern that we would find ourselves in this situation. Uh, everybody else around us has. Uh, so here we are. Would anybody else like to address, uh, you have another question, sir?
Yeah, I guess to follow up with what you just said. Um, uh, I'm aware, um, although I didn't do a scientific study or whatnot, but I, I have friends that live in other parts of the area, and some of them use, uh, Penn Waste for their trash pickup in different townships. And, uh, out of two individuals in particular that I had talked to recently about this, uh, service that we're anticipating to get, they do have provisions for, uh, small bag pickup. Now, I don't know what happened or the details of how you placed your bids, but I find it awfully curious that no one, uh, made that provision if it is, in fact, a, uh, a criteria that you should be looking at, that there are numbers of individuals in the township that do not accumulate trash that requires a ninety-six gallon container, much less the cost difference between, uh, single bag pickup versus, uh, uh, maintaining a, uh, a, a container at your property that you, uh, could take maybe six months to fill it up.
It's probably, I guess, maybe, sir, the timing, as far as when do you get the new contract?
Yeah.
Like Waste Management, five years ago, when we put out the bid, they were willing to do the bags. Um, and they were willing to, to forego the automatic, uh, collection, because they could still work it out economically. Um, and then this time, the same company, same parameters, said, you know, no, we're not going to do it. So, and now, at the same time, they were missing a few yard waste pickups, because they could literally not get enough people out on the road. So that's why they had to jack up, every, the whole industry has to jack up their pay to get people. But I think it's probably a matter of when the contractor talking about, just the, the finances change. That's why we could have one company, Waste Management, who was willing to do it at one point, and at this point said, no, we, we can't.
Yeah, Chris, I think you're probably right. Um, where your friends live, they're probably in the middle of their contract or almost at the end of the contract. I know Dairy Township and Middle Paxton, um, both renewed their contracts. Uh, Middle Paxton's a hundred-and-fifty a quarter, Dairy Township's a hundred-and-thirty a quarter, and we're only at one-oh-three. Um, so probably your friends are in the middle of their contract, and they'll be in for a shocker like we were when the new contracts, uh, when the bids come out.
Well, one, one-oh-three, uh, plus of the five-dollar fee.
One-oh-eight, yeah, one-oh-eight, which is still cheaper than one-thirty or one-fifty.
Yeah, the, the only real, uh, option that we do have is whether or not to have Waste Management do the billing.
No.
And, or pardon me, Penn Waste do the billing, or whether we bring the billing in-house. Uh, Penn Waste would charge us, what, thirty dollars a quarter, you know, to do the billing, uh, per customer? And we can do it, we think, for about five dollars a quarter. So, uh, that's the one choice the board can make tonight, uh, would be for us to do the billing, and at least, uh, save twenty-five dollars for, for everybody for, uh, the first, uh, well, for each, each year of the contract. Would anybody else like to address the board or ask a question on this issue? Yes, Tim?
Tim Murphy, fifteen twenty-four Pine Hollow Road. We talked some last week about sixty-five gallon bins as opposed to ninety-six, and I think it was Supervisor Lindsay who asked that, uh, uh, sample containers be brought to the meeting tonight, so I'm a little disappointed that I-
Uh, look behind you.
They're so small, how could I miss?
We have sample containers, yes.
Good. Okay. Thank you for correcting me on that. Uh, there was, there was also, uh, discussion by several people about their interest in using sixty-fives rather than ninety-six, and I concur with that, by the way. Uh, there seemed to be some problem with getting the sixty-fives in time for the July first contract, because they're the wrong color, or they don't have the township's name on them.
They have to be ordered, right?
Yes, they still need to be ordered.
Yeah, they have to, they have to order, what, fifteen thousand containers? That takes a-
Depends on how much.
Thirty thousand.
Maybe I, maybe I misunderstood last week, but I believe what we were told was the ninety-six gallon containers will be provided to everyone.
Initially.
Initially.
Yes.
And that we can request sixty-fives after that.
Correct.
But I believe the gentleman from Penn Waste said that he has some sixty-fives that he could put out, but they don't have the township's logo on them.
You have some, but we don't know if you have enough.
Yeah, I can't tell, I, I have no data to tell you how many people would want that, and I also cannot completely deplete my inventory of sixty-five gallon containers.
I wish we didn't have to do that too, because I'm going to, I'm going to trade down as soon as I can. I wish we didn't have to do it that way, but, um, they don't know how many people are going to want sixty-five, uh, ahead of time. So, and if you don't have enough for everyone, who do you pick, and how do you do it? It's, uh, I wish, I, believe me, I, I wish we didn't have to make people do that.
Well, I think if they, if they are available, and we could do that at least for the recycling, my suggestion would be, we have those round stickers that we've been using for years, Lower Paxton Township Recycling. Slap those on, whatever color, uh, sixty-five gallon totes you have, and let's use those.
Well, as, as the gentleman just said, they don't have many of them, and they cannot deplete their entire supply doing that. So, uh, unfortunately, uh, the, the situation will be, everybody will get the larger container, uh, delivered by, before July first. And then if you wish to trade down to a smaller one, you make that re- make that request. At that point, we'll have data as to how many we'll need, and we can order them and get them delivered. It'll take a couple of months to, you know, work through it, but we'll get, we'll get there.
Okay. I think your demand is going to be pretty significant based on what I've heard at the meeting last week and what I've heard since then. I guess I'd like to address a broader issue here, and I think it, it, it has to be addressed. The process, the process we're going through seems backwards to me. Nobody knew anything about this until the agenda was, was posted last week. We had no idea that you were going about this, and it makes me wonder why there was no public meeting held beforehand. I understand there was, there was a pre, a pre-bid meeting with the, with the prospective contractors, but there was no input sought from the community.
Well, input.
This isn't, this isn't too far different from what we went through several years ago when we found out we were getting a district justice's office in our, in our neighborhood.
Tim, it is very different, and, you know, the bottom line is, you know, to have had a, an initial meeting, it's a bid process. It would not have mattered what the input was. The process is the process.
Well, excuse me, but it would have mattered because you would have known what our interests were. You would have known that 65 gallon bins are, are a hot ticket item, and maybe, maybe the contract should have been structured so that 65 gallons is the default, and if somebody wants 96, they pay a little bit extra to get those.
Well, the bottom line is that, you know, we only are going to get what they're willing to bid on in terms of the service they're going to provide. We could have asked for that, they would have told us no, and we'd be right back in the same position. You know, and the process here has been that, you know, we, we have done what we do with every issue, which is whenever we have a major issue, we go through whatever preparatory process is necessary. We put the item on a workshop agenda, which we did last week. We spend whatever time is needed at the workshop to go through it and explain it, and then we wait a week before we vote. That way, there's time for public input, and that's what we have done here, what we do with everything that we do. And we do it that way so that there is public information.
But maybe I'm not making myself clear.
You are.
You, you, you need to get public input before you structure the advertisement for bids, because you need to know what the community is, is interested in doing and what we really find important. People think bags are important, the bag tags are important.
Well, again.
I didn't know that till last week.
They can.
And I can tell you, if, if bags, bag tags were available, I would take bag tags under this new contract.
And you know what? We can, it was, bag tags were in the bid, weren't they? Wasn't that something they could bid on?
A manual collection.
Manual collection, okay. Yeah, it was in the bid, nobody bid on it.
Okay, that, that raises another question, and in my mind, and I'll address this to Mr. Stein. Is a, is a bid responsible when it's non-responsive?
Well, this bid was responsive.
They, they didn't respond to the request for, for bag tags.
But they did bid on the things that they bid on, and so it is responsive.
So they can pick and choose which bid items they want to, want to.
Yeah, as far as I know, it was structured that way so that they could, they could choose different, different items that, that was in the bid document.
If I was going to advertise to have a house built, I would hope that the contractor would want to install every part of the house and not just the parts that he can make the most money on.
Well, yeah, there's a difference between how government operates and how the private sector operates, and, you know, you know, however much you may dislike the process, however much we may dislike the process, and we agree with you, we're not happy with it, it is legally the process we are required to follow. And that's the bottom line. And we join you in being unhappy with it.
But before that mandated, mandated process, what harm would there be in having a public meeting and asking, asking people what their interests or their disinterests were? You know, the, the whole idea with the, with the elderly and not being able to have bag tags anymore because they only put out a small amount of trash, that's a significant thing, I think.
Well, it, I agree, it is significant, and we did include that in the bid, and nobody bid on it. So we could have had a public meeting, the public meeting would have only told us to put that in the bid, which we did anyhow, and at the end of the day, nobody bid on it. So if nobody bids on providing that, any amount of meetings, public or otherwise, have no impact.
Do you have any sense for the number of people in the township who are going to want the 65 gallon bins?
Well, not yet. That's why, that's why we are going to, first of all, put the larger bins out and then have people request them so we know how many to buy.
Maybe we could have shortcut that whole process if we had put, put an insert in the latest, in the last sewer bill and basically took a poll.
Well, assuming people read the insert.
That's tough, Mr. Murphy. It's, it's tough to do that, I, to, to get an accurate count from people. I mean, we're not stupid, all right? I think all of us, well, no, I guess a few of us were here. The last time we did it, the contract, we know the big cans aren't popular.
That's right.
Not popular with me. We knew that.
I was here, like I said last week, deja vu all over again.
And we knew that, we knew that. But I don't want to mislead people into thinking that if we had done things differently, we would not have reached the same difficult conclusion, because that's misleading. We put as much into the bid as we could, and then the economics of a, of a industry right now that is, has not recovered from the labor changes that COVID caused, that ruled the day. And in the end, we need someone to pick up everybody's trash, and we're, we're, we are at the, the mercy of the economic factors involved, unless we want to go Harrisburg City route, start our own, get a professional, and that goes down a whole different road. So, you know, I know public input is always good. We knew, we knew for five years that those cans aren't popular. We're one of the last townships in the area. We held out the longest, and I just don't want to mislead people into thinking that if you had done A, B, or C, it could have been a different outcome, because that is not the case.
So, so knowing the opposition to the 65, to the 96 gallon totes, why, why was it advertised that way? Why didn't we advertise for 65s and offer people the option of 96 if they're going to generate that much trash? And?
We don't know what the numbers are. We don't know how many people are going to want.
Well, as you just said, you know there's a lot of opposition to the 96 gallon totes.
There's a lot of opposition to the totes generally, but here's my question. In other municipalities, do you have an idea what the percentage has been, generally speaking, of people who want the larger ones compared to the smaller ones?
I would say, I, I will answer that more so towards who wants the smaller ones, because I feel like most people, once they receive the 95 or the 96, they're, they will just keep that. I would say roughly 5 to 10% maybe.
So if, so if you have 5 to 10%, let's take the higher number, 10%, who want the smaller one, you give everybody the smaller one, and then you've got a 90% give them, people the bigger one. That doesn't work real well. That costs a lot of extra money.
I, I understand what you're saying, but notice what he said, they kept the 96. That doesn't mean they filled the 96.
Well.
90, 96 gallons is a huge amount of trash in one week's time.
Frankly, I'm, I'm, personally, I'm going to use the 96. I'm wondering whether it's going to be enough compared to the number of cans that we currently put out. But, you know, the bottom, the bottom line, Tim, is, you know, these items were included in the bid, and the bid results came in, and this is what we got with the bid results. And as we said, this has happened in municipalities all over the mid-state, probably all over the state. We knew it was coming, we knew that it was not going to be popular, it's not popular with us. But the bottom line is, we can only do what people respond to with a bid.
Well, I think you kind of, you, you, you fed into it by advertising it for 96 gallon.
Well, I think the industry.
If we don't agree, then that's just.
Well, and frankly, I would disagree with you. I would have kept the 96 no matter what. If only 10% go to the smaller one, it would have been an econ, it would have been a logistical and economic disaster to advertise for the smaller ones and then switch out 90% to bigger ones. Why would we do that?
It won't swap them.
No sense.
They're going to be swapped out.
You, you don't know that what he says is true in Lower Paxton Township.
Well, and, yeah, and now you're proving my, you're proving our point. That is why they're getting the 96, and then we'll have people request the smaller ones, and we'll know exactly how many we'll need it.
Okay.
And we will do that for people.
Thanks.
And Mr. Murphy, I, I did ask Mr. Gutschel after the meeting last week about the 96 versus, and he said the industry shows that most people do want the 96 gallons, so that's why the bid was on 96.
Anybody else like to address the board on this issue? Okay. Well, seeing no additional questions or comments, we do have before us the need to take action to award a contract for solid waste collection and disposal services to Penn Waste. Is there a motion? I know nobody wants to actually make the motion for obvious reasons, but.
Well, we discussed it last week, we discussed it this evening. We tried to extend Waste Management to keep everything the same. Nobody likes change, me included, but we need to have the trash picked up on July 1st. So I make a motion. The motion is that we award the contract for waste collection and disposal services with Penn Waste. And if we, as we did with Waste Management, if we run into issues along the way, we'll be dealing with Penn Waste to correct them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We also need to take action to award a contract for recycling collection and transportation disposal services, these are very small print, with Penn Waste Inc. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Now, I will add, just to put a, a period at the end of this, that our staff has worked with Penn Waste and have agreed that Penn Waste and the township will share the cost of doing a direct mail piece to each and every residential customer, explaining what is going on, explaining that they'll have the ability to swap out containers. So that will be going out so that what we, what we didn't want to have happen was, the last week in June, all of a sudden, people looking out and seeing these containers sitting in their driveway and, you know, what's that? Because my bet is that 99.9% of folks are not yet paying attention. But we, we will do a direct mail piece so that everybody gets something in the mail, and I would hope that everybody will open and read it.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I think that's the best way, because if we would put it in the insert in the sewer, a lot of people just get the sewer bill out and they do not read the insert. So if they see a envelope coming from Lower Paxton Township, that they know it's not the sewer bill, hopefully you're going to open it and everything will be explained. And thank you, Penn Waste, for going halves with us, we appreciate it.
I just wanted to say thank you for, first of all, awarding the contract to us, and I do understand that this is a big change for all of the residents of Lower Paxton Township. We are committed to working with the township to make sure this process goes as smoothly as possible, and we're, we're here to help in any way that, any questions that come up, I'm here, that's my job. So please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you.
We will probably be reaching out to you a lot over the next five years.
With that question, who gets the problems?
I just, and I have one more thing. I mean, I said this last week, but, because the gentleman said about your website, I would encourage everybody that is here or watching to go look at their website, because you've got a lot of good information on, you know, what can be recycled, and, you know, where to put the cans, and all of that other stuff. I looked at the videos, you know, myself when I left here last week, you know, so I think that there's a lot of resources that you guys provide. I was pleasantly surprised at the, at the website, so, and the, and the videos that you guys have for education.
As a quick update, too, as, about the website, that is, has been brought up to the compliance that was needed for ADA, so.
Oh, good.
I, I made sure that happened, I apologize for that.
And Joe, I have a question. You know what, it just slipped my mind.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, my gosh.
Over 60.
Think about it. It's okay, senior moment. What was that, after 60, right?
And, and a reminder also that our Lower Paxton website, lowerpaxton-pa.gov, we do have all the bid documents and all the information, and there's a ton of, ton of material on there, and keep an eye on that website, because we will be continuing to provide additional information as we go along.
And I got that question.
Okay.
Are you going to be hiring?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you looking for a job?
No, no, but I just wanted to know if they had to hire, you know, to fulfill what we need them to do in Lower Paxton Township.
I was looking forward to you collecting my trash, but that's not going to happen. All right, we do have other business tonight. We do need to take action to approve a preliminary and final land development plan for Cardan Enterprises LLC. Nick, welcome back.
The preliminary file land development plan for Cardan Enterprises LLC proposes site improvements to make the lot suitable at 6730 Allentown Boulevard for storage and wholesale of liquid paving products and contractor supplies associated with highway projects. The site improvements will consist of the installation of four storage tanks, two accessory buildings that will serve as storage areas, and additional truck bays. Parcel 35034061 has a total area of 2.8 acres and is located at 6730 Allentown Boulevard. The site is in the light industrial zoning district and will be served by public sewer and private water supply. The plan was approved at the April 5th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, along with the five requested waivers. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have for me.
Nick, is that up on the hill? I don't know if Cutco is still there, but where Cutco used to be?
It would access the same driveway where Triangle Printing is.
Okay, okay. And are the, do any of the other businesses have a concern on what they're going to be doing?
Not that it was made.
With the liquid?
Nothing that was made aware to the township. The liquid that they are storing on-site is permitted under ordinance. There's no bulk processing, just storage.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is there a representative of the company here? If you'd please come to the podium and give us your name and address, and feel free to add any additional information to this.
Good evening, Mike Wade with Wade-O-Mell Incorporated. We prepared the plan. Nick's summary was accurate. We have no issues with the outstanding comments. We feel that we'll be able to fully address those outstanding issues in a timely manner.
Now, Nick, the liquid that's going to be stored there, have, have the, has the, have the local fire departments or others been able to weigh in on that at all?
We provided plans, forward view, we received no comment. But being stored.
Okay, but they are, they are aware of what will be stored there, because should they ever need to respond?
They would need to know what the liquid.
They're aware of the plan, I'm not sure if they're aware of the liquid. The owner of the businesses here that may be able to speak to that, to provide any clarity that you may, you know, any questions you may have.
Okay. I think maybe the gentleman in the back might have, if you'd come to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Chief for Allspac City Fire Company, just to clarify, we did not receive these plans yet. We have not had, we have not reviewed them, they were not forwarded to us.
So you have no clue what the liquid is that's going to be in?
I have, again, I haven't seen any of these plans, this is news to us. I don't know if it got dropped behind the scenes and just didn't make it to us, or what, we just have not seen them yet.
Board members, I can assure you, the plan was dropped off to the fire department back in December.
Could the owners maybe come to the podium and address, maybe provide the chief with some information here?
Carolyn Stacks with Daniel Craig Incorporated. We do, at our current location in Swaterra Township, we've been there since 1933, but we do the Tier 2 every year, which we have to let the fire company know and all the, all the other people that need to know what they, what there is, what is in each tank, and what they have to get the MSDSs, what the fire rating is, et cetera. So that is always done every year. And all the products are used on highways, tack coat, water-based pavement maintenance products.
The major, all the products are water-based products that contain, everything is in containment dike, because everything has to be contained other than literally water. Everything is approved by DEP. Every township municipality and state uses our products. We are the leader in this part of Pennsylvania, we've been in business for 90 years. We've never had a reportable spill in 90 years. The property that we're at in 4200 Paxton Street, before the state is taking over that property through eminent domain, they tested all the soils on the property and the property came up clean. before the state is taking over that property through eminent domain, they tested all the soils on the property, and the property came up clean.
Are any of those materials classified as hazardous materials? And I understand it's sort of a generic.
I mean, it's a, it's a water-based product. It's, they're not solvent-based, naphtha-based, or fuel-based products. Everything is water-based.
But is it considered a hazardous product?
We have asphalt cement, which is, it's considered a hazardous product, but it's because of its temperature exceeding two hundred and twelve degrees, but it's a non-regulated product because it's a solid at sixty degrees.
Chief Ross, could you come up and ask that question, please?
My question was, is it required placards to transport?
Yes.
Okay, then it's a hazardous material in our eyes.
Okay.
Nick, what is our timeframe with needing to approve? Are we on a, are we on a clock on this?
The time extension is until May twenty-third.
Okay. Chief?
I have no problem going ahead and making preliminary approval for this. We just need to review water supply, and that's primarily why we request the plans be dropped off. Again, I don't know, I'm not denying he hadn't dropped off. Don't know what happened to them. Again, it wasn't the background of my firehouse or through the township. I can tell you, most of those plans, always make it on my desk, and we get to review them. This is just one I can tell you we haven't seen at this time.
But you wouldn't have a problem with giving a preliminary approval tonight?
No, I would just need to review water supply in case there is an incident there to make sure we would have sufficient water supply. I know that end of the township, we already have some limited hydrants down there, and I'd just like to review that.
So if we would give the preliminary approval, and then he goes out and they check.
Well, this is a preliminary and final land development plan.
Yeah, it is final land.
Well, I guess it would be in the best interest of the business to cooperate with you to provide that information because they ever have a need. Would you be willing to do that with the fire department?
I, I, I don't know if I would, I think we should, if we could just push it until the chief gets a chance to look at it, meets with them, sees what the water supply is out there, because it is a hazardous, a hazardous material. And you said we have till May, Nick?
May twenty-third is the time, is a one-time extension.
Okay, that that is just me, so.
So we could, we could put it on the agenda for, what would it be, May, May second?
If I get the plans this week, we can review them before the end of the week. No problem.
Okay. Well, what is the pleasure of the board?
Table it.
Somebody needs to make that motion.
I'll make a motion that we table the preliminary final land development plan for Cardan Enterprises LLC, Plan twenty-three dash oh three.
To May third? Or second, May second?
Second. When's the next?
Tuesday, May second. It's a really, really small type at the bottom, but it's Tuesday, May second.
Second emotion.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, that'll give you two weeks to get everything worked out, and then we should not have a problem. That then takes us to the improvement guarantees. I believe there were five, yes. Anybody have any questions or comments about these improvement guarantees? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We improve the improvement guarantees for Deven Woods, Mini Meadows, Phase Two, Autumn Ridge, Phase Two and Three, Maiden Creek, Huntley, Phase One.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. This takes us to the payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority. Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we do approve payment of the bills for Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority.
So moved. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any further announcements by board members or by the township manager? Hearing none, our next board meeting, as we just mentioned, will be a business meeting on Tuesday, May second, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM right here in this room. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there, is there a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.